Okay, we'll reconvene to open session at 6:06. Will you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and fix whatever that is?
I'm still in there again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Michael, can we get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Jose, a report out on closed session?
Yes, Mayor. The council had closed session today, considered a few items, including labor negotiations, property negotiations, and also an evaluation. No reportable action was taken.
I think the volume's on on your computer. All right, any conflict of interest declarations? Anyone? Seeing no hands. Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, staff question being pulled. Item D5 from the consent agenda. This is regarding the bid for painting our police station in Arbers. We have an amendment to propose to council.
What, D4?
Oh, D4, excuse me.
Okay, good. D4. Seeing no others, moving on. Public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Per city council policy, three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Yes, ma'am, I see you standing. Could you please state your name for the record?
My name's Morgan Anne Williams. Yesterday, I was in the ex-community garden, which is privately owned. There was an unsheltered man who leaped over the fence like a antelope, who keeps kind of purving after me. He's not supposed to be in the garden. It's trespassing. He had his bike chained to a table. I called the police for help as I was told to do. The dispatcher told me it was public property, and she was sending an officer out there to educate me, to let me know that he was allowed to be in the garden while he's screaming at me while I'm on the phone with her. It was a dangerous situation, and I am bringing it up so it doesn't happen again. A dispatcher is supposed to dispatch. She's not supposed to judge. She's not supposed to send an officer out there to educate me on something she knows nothing about. And when somebody calls for help and they need help, because there's an aggressive male who's obviously a meth addict, he's missing all his teeth, he offered me alcohol before when he came in the garden one night at 10:00 when he was unwanted. When we need help, we should be able to call and get help. So that's my point. And I'd like to know how, you know, if she's going to be disciplined or what's going to happen to her.
Okay, so what I would suggest is you actually speak to her supervisor to file a complaint if you'd like to file one.
Oh, I've emailed Jason.
Okay. So then the portion of that part, we'll let you handle that internally, but I really thank you for your comments, and I'll make sure that everyone is on the--
And also Officer Nunes continues to be rude and arrogant to people, and I talked to Jason about it, and it continues. And I'm not the only person who's observed it, and it's not okay.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. Anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment? Seeing none. Do we have any hands on the attendees list? I'll resume. Seeing none, we will move on to the next. We have no proclamations. So consent calendar, we want to poll D4 currently with staff. Any others that anyone would like to poll? Seeing none. Do we have a motion for--
Mayor, I'd like to move the consent calendar. Item D1, 2, 3, and 5.
I'll second Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call vote?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby? And Councilman Mayor Lance?
Aye.
We'll work on the audio. We're not able to hear Zoom right now.
Councilwoman Bagby and Cruz, just to let you know, we could read your lips. There was no words in the room, so they're working on the difficulties right now. So D4, who would like to speak upon that one?
Mayor, councilmembers, we asked this item to be polled. Since we wrote the report, we have gotten a request from the police department to include the painting of the entire police department. The current budget amount in the resolution includes the south and west-facing. We recommend that we're going to increase the scope of work to include the entire building, which would increase the price by $10,750. So if approved, we'll amend the resolution and include that in the scope of work for what's to be completed for the paint job. He does want to start next week, so.
Okay. Discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just make a quick comment. The building's in dire need of work. The exterior, there's a lot of rot, which is scheduled to be repaired, and it definitely is way overdue for a paint job. So I really think it's important to do the entire building, not just two sides.
Vice Mayor?
I'm fine with that.
Michael, do we have Councilmember Bagby or Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, all right. We're dealing with the technical video side of things. I'll go to this screen.
Anything we can do to see if we can hear them? Councilmember Cruz, could you try to talk real quick? Still can't hear you, but do we get a thumbs? There's still no words in here. Okay, thumbs up from you. Councilmember Bagby? Perfect. Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Any public comments? Seeing none, and no hands on the attendees. We'll bring it back. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item D4 as amended for approval.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call?
Thank you. Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby? If you can test your audio, we're testing different things. You can barely hear it. Councilmember Cruz? Yeah, we're not able to hear you, Councilmember Cruz. Our IT folks are working on it right now, but we got an eye from both of you. And Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sounds like it's an echo off of someone's computer that we're probably hearing. Absolutely, yes. So let's take a five-minute break, try to fix this technical difficulty, because we have to have it. All right, do we have any communications? Seeing none. New business G1, update on PG&E's sustainable solutions turnkey program for energy efficiency projects.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, it's the council. The act of tonight's presentation, as you just did, a PG&E investment grade audit or assessment results. This has been a project that we've--
Recording in progress.
--been working with PG&E and the Department of-- Centrica for about a year and a half now, or 18 months. Centrica's team with PG&E's team has done a citywide audit of city facilities, looking at our energy systems. In addition, we have looked at facilities that the city owns, including the library and the senior center. We've done a particularly deep dive on our enterprise systems, including our water system and energy system. And we're really proud at this point to bring forward the results of that audit work and that assessment work. The intent of this program all along has been kind of twofold. One is to look at potential energy savings that can be obtained by the city that would generate savings, that would pay for the improvements that are necessary to improve our energy usage. And then secondarily, an ancillary result would be to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions related to a reduction in our energy use. Tonight, we're joined by our PG&E staff members, as well as Centrica, and we're going to walk you through a presentation that provides an update on the assessment and audit results. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and introduce you. David, if you want to come on up, we'll do a share screen with your presentation, and we'll walk you through the update on the assessment results that we've, you know, that has been the result of the work that we've done to date on analysis. One of the key projects that we evaluated as part of this assessment was upgrading our water meters. That kind of came in midway through the process, and so it took us a little bit longer to get to this point, but I think the meter project really represents an opportunity for us to complete an important capital improvement project in a much shorter timeframe than was identified in your CIP. So with that said, we'll go ahead and introduce David. David, if you want to introduce yourself and your team, and go ahead and walk us through the results of your investment grade audit results.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is David Carter. I'm with PG&E. Been with the company for about 10 years, solely focused on developing energy projects for our larger customers. And we're really excited about what we've got to present to you today. On the phone with me is Brooklyn Stewart from Centrica. He's going to be in the back there if we need any specific detail that you guys might have questions about. So next slide, please. So, you know, we've had a couple of different catch-ups or report-outs over the last year and a half. We are completed now with the investment grade audit or assessment, and our goal here is to really seek some guidance from council on sort of, we're going to present a couple of different options and why they're different, and really get some input from the council on that. And our goal at the end of this is to really go out now and seek financing for the project. And then we'll be coming back to the council with a resolution for doing the project and getting the financing. Next slide, please. When we started this project, there were a couple of key things that were part and parcel of our objectives. Number one was upgrading the infrastructure in the city. A lot of the buildings were older, mechanical systems that were end-of-life and aging. That included, you know, all the mechanical systems, as well as lighting. A lot of the lighting had an opportunity to be upgraded to LED lighting. We also wanted to look at how to further the greening strategy, whether there's an opportunity for additional solar. And we also looked at the wastewater treatment plant and some of the technologies there. And then, as David mentioned, the water meter measure kind of came in midstream, and I'm going to talk a little bit more detail about that one, because I think you guys may have seen a lot about the other ones already. That's the one where we were spending the last several months working on. Next slide, please. Couple of other things that we were looking at as part of this project is this being done under Government Code 4217, which allows sole source to do energy projects as long as they're budget-neutral over the life of the projects, the measures. And our goal is to really help you guys reduce your energy usage without impacting comfort in the buildings, to the folks that are using them, to really provide a, you know, walk-and-talk perspective to energy. And then, specific to the water meter stuff, the opportunity to automate, reduce some of the man-hour work that it takes to actually get your meter data, as well as to make sure that the meters, in being replaced, are now all state-of-the-art, and hopefully reduce any losses you guys are sustaining due to leaks and, you know, non-functioning meters. Next slide, please. So, you know, as mentioned before, these are the measures that we looked at. Lighting, replacing the mechanical systems, or HVAC, the water meters, streetlights, there were a handful of streetlights throughout the city that are not LED that we can place. A little bit of PV, some storage tied that. You guys did a project, I believe with Tesla, with battery storage systems, so looking at how those can operate together. We looked at an aeration system upgrade for the wastewater treatment plant and evaluated some EV charging stations. Next slide, please. Want to talk a little bit about the water meter project, because this is something I think is, you know, we've been told is very important to the city, and this is a great opportunity to bring this measure to the city in a more immediate manner than I think it was being contemplated before. Next slide, please. So what we're looking at is installing a complete infrastructure for an AMI water meter data capture system. So this would be all of the components that would allow for daily capture of water use within the city. And it would be, you know, essentially a radio system that would collect that data, and that would reduce the ability to, or reduce the need of sending people out to actually read the meters. This includes the software and all the points of communication to set up that system. Next slide, please. I mean, there's some key benefits to doing this project. I'm going to talk about some of the economic ones first. You know, the project itself is going to be a little over $4 million to complete. And the original intent in the meter project was to do this sort of over a multi-year process. And what we can see is by being able to do this right out of the gate, without taking into consideration sort of the ancillary costs, escalators, whatever, you will start saving from this project--
In a greater, more immediate manner than you would if you did it piece-mealing over the eight years.
That we were told it was originally planned for. The infrastructure was going to have to be built anyhow, even if you rolled it out slowly. So being, doing it all at one time will allow for that infrastructure, the implementation, the communication to the public, and the rollout of all of that kind of at the same time, so that you can get that system up and running, working right out of the gate. Customer outreach will be at one point, you know, so you'll be able to communicate to everybody that this is coming, and rather than piecemealing and having folks in the community saying, "Well, when am I getting my meter replaced?" and all that. So we think from sort of an economic and community outreach, community perspective, there's a lot of advantages of doing this sort of in one fell swoop. Everybody knows about all the supply chain, you know, cost issues that we've been facing for the last year, where we did put the meters on preorder hold to secure the pricing, so provided that the council decides to move forward with this. You know, we're in a position where we've kind of locked in the cost of the meters. Next slide, please. Other benefits, you know, you're now going to have 3,300 new meters with the complete infrastructure. There'll be a new billing system. You'll be able to have more accurate revenue projections, full mapping of the water infrastructure. Hopefully, it'll help reduce truck rolls, reduce water loss, also allow you to be able to see customer data, flag things that are inaccurate or seem wrong, but you can also share that data, and the customers can be able to see it as well. So there's really a lot of benefit to getting this project completed. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about four different options, and really, this is, option one is the, what I call the all-in. So all the measures that we looked at, here are the costs. These are fixed firm turnkey costs that are in front of you. So this is what the project is going to cost. We're not talking about extra change orders or anything. This is a fixed firm turnkey price at the moment. And about an $8.89 million project with about $600,000 in energy savings, and from a simple payback perspective, that's about a 15-and-a-half-year project, which, for projects like this, is very much in line with what we see at other municipalities. When we looked at this, we also tried to figure out where are things that might want to come off, or might make sense to come off, or are drags to the economics of the project. So go to the next slide. We put option two in here. The public library and the senior center, you guys are responsible for those buildings, but there's no energy savings that you guys get to take advantage of. And so in some respects, they are a drag on the economics of the system. And you see, it improves the payback by, you know, almost four-tenths of a year. However, you know, one of the things for the extra $300,000 difference that we're talking about, these are community resource centers, they're, you know, they're in dire need of upgraded systems. So some of the things that we've tried to, you know, contemplate is, all right, you can take them out, but in the scheme of the bigger project for the small timeframe that you're thinking about, or looking at as a difference, you know, these may be buildings you do want to contemplate keeping in the project from that community perspective. If you go to the next slide, option three, we took out the gridby system, which is the aeration system at the wastewater treatment plant. This has a, you know, longer payback, a lot of it to do with the fact that we have to put all the equipment in a new building. So there's actually some construction work that comes around that, and so it increases the payback, you know, reducing the economic value of the energy savings. Option three does include looking at or including the library and the senior center, a little under $8 million, simple payback of 14.6 years. And then there's option four, which is essentially, on the next slide, please, taking out the library, senior center, and the gridby system. So what we're looking at is really a difference between 14.2 years and 15.5 years from a simple payback perspective, from taking those things out that, you know, we contemplated as things that may, could be done later. I think there's some work being done at the water treatment plant that may, wastewater treatment plant, that may necessitate doing some other things, and maybe putting the gridby system in later may make more sense. And so that's one of the reasons it's on that list. If we go to the next slide, this is what each of the measure economics look like. So we broke them down by each site and what the measure is, whether it's the lighting or the HVAC, et cetera. And what you're going to see is there's a number of measures that have fairly long paybacks. For example, as we mentioned, the library and the senior center, you know, showing 108-year payback. If you look at that strictly from those economics, you go, "Why would I want to do that?" Well, the fact of the matter is, you're going to have to do it anyhow. So whether you're going to treat it as a capital project and just pay for it, that's one route you can go, but by looking at it through this energy project lens, we're able to balance all of these paybacks together to create something that allows all this work to get done, you know, within a payback period that is actually very reasonable. And I think, you know, you'll see that a lot of this will be driven by the water meter project, as well as the solar. But, you know, rest assured that everything else on here that's a long project is a capital project, and it's something that you're spending a lot of money with maintenance now on, that you're going to have to budget over the next several years to figure out a way to get that equipment replaced. This is an easy mechanism to actually get all of that infrastructure upgraded now. Next slide, please. One of the things that also the city's been able to do is there are some grant dollars from the California Department of Water Resources, as well as ARPA money. So when we talked about the project costs and those paybacks, that didn't include possible capital contribution to the project. So when we actually look at reducing the project scope through those grants and federal funds, that the payback on the project finance would be a little over 12 years, or 12 and a half years. So that's actually a very exciting number to look at. You know, we do look at, you know, escalators and what have you. So if we go to the next slide, this is showing the cash flow. This actually looks at a 20-year extrapolation of everything that we're looking at doing, what the savings are, the costs for your software for the billing system, solar degradation. So this is really how we evaluate over, you know, a longer period of time, the economics of the project. And what you can see is that, based on the savings, all of the escalators, et cetera, that about a 12-and-a-half-year payback from a lending perspective. Next slide, please. There are a couple of other things to, you know, just to consider or to note, just, there's software costs, those have been bundled into the cash flow, so they're accounted for via the savings. We did have a conversation with David and Kevin, maybe Kevin wasn't on the phone at the time, but, you know, about some of the solar options of O and M. You know, you're going to have equipment warranties, you've got a one-year construction warranty, and in many cases, a broad O and M program may not make a lot of sense. So what we want to do is make sure that, all right, you know, should they be cleaned once a year? How might we do that? And if there's a need to develop a program that we can build into the project itself, we can take care of that. There are also a couple of other ancillary things around the water meters, you know, as options. The water meter savings include O and M of about $146,000 a year. We did build in some contingency around that, and as I mentioned earlier, there is $2.7 million of a project buy-down that really changes the dynamics as far as the length of the loan term. Next slide, please.
Great, thank you so much. Good presentation. Let's open it up for discussion. Vice Mayor, would you like to start?
If I can turn my mic on, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, just a couple of clarification questions from staff, or for staff. David, at the Public Works Subcommittee meetings, we were talking about the $3 million grant that the city had received, and one of the first, I think, projects that we were looking at doing was the water meters. So now this is being proposed to replace that?
The way we're looking at it is that this is a vehicle to assist the city to deliver the project. The grant that we received from DWR really provides one thing, and that is approximately 50% of the cost, the original cost, to deliver the water meter project. So of the $3.2 million grant we received from DWR, about 50% of that, 1.6, is what was included in the grant application. So if we didn't have this project, for instance, or this process in place, we would have to, with those funds, we could carry out meter replacement for about half of our meters. And what that doesn't cover is the procurement process that we would be utilizing to deliver the project, whereas this is, as David provided for, this is a, council's adopted a resolution providing a sole-source procurement through the turnkey program. So what this project enables us to do is leverage those DWR grant funds to help pay for the meters, but to deliver a complete project for the entire city, paying for half of those with the grants, the other half to be financed with a portion of ARPA funds, and then financed through the savings that are generated by employing those meters. And that's an important premise with this whole program, is it's really kind of, there's a program, it's called Savings by Design, and then what we're intending to do is implement these measures that have an upfront cost, but that are going to pay for themselves over time by the savings or the additional revenue that's going to be generated. And so what we don't have tonight for you to review is a financing plan, and what we want to do is, you know, get your feedback on those options so that we can come back with a financing plan. And in that financing plan, there will be some options. So for instance, we've identified ARPA for our water meter project. Well, maybe council wants to use ARPA funds for a different water capital improvement project, then we would-- project, then we would, the financing plan would finance the other 50% of the cost of the meter project, does that make sense? So, really, the way, the analysis that we've shown reflects the inclusion of the, the DWR grant funds. We were very upfront with PG&E that we had, you know, these two tracks. So, what, you know, what it does alleviate is us having to develop, you know, bid specs and, and design documents and procurement process, because we've done that in designing this, this, this project with PG&E, and setting up the, is it the government code 4217 for sole sourcing. So, I hope I answered your question, Vice-
Well, ki- kind of.
Okay.
But I, I guess one of the things, you know, the, the grant that we received for that $3 million was a reimbursement grant. So, in other words, we would perform the project, and then submit the, submit the reports, and we would get our money back. How would that intermesh with the 3,300 meters that PG&E is proposing on installing? And then, also, I'd like to know, one of the things that, David, that we were concerned about at that Subcommittee meeting, was being able to procure those, because every other city in California is probably racing to purchase those water meters, and with supply and demand, I get that you, that you locked in the price, but is it guaranteed that you're going to get 3,300 meters to install in Cloverdale?
We have, if I could address that one, and then come back to the other one, is that those meters were put on preorder, so the manufacturer knows that it's coming. They won't give us a delivery date until we get the PO or the invoice in place. It's anticipated to be May of next year, if we move fairly quickly, but that's, you know, so we're, we're in line, and I think we just need to formalize.
Well, you know, and that may generate a concern of mine, because that $3 million grant had a drop dead date of when we had to use it by, if I'm not mistaken. And if we're not starting, starting the project for a year down the road, I want to make sure that we don't miss that window. And then, how do we go, how do we take that grant money and apply it to this 15.1-year repayment? Would also be another question of mine. I also want to know what the interest rate would be, and on that, on that money as well. So, that'll do it for now.
If, if you like, Vice Mayor, maybe I can ask Mr. Carter to elaborate on how the project, the DWR grant and the ARPA funds were incorporated into the, kind of the, the project pro forma.
So, when we, when we looked at the, at the cash flow analysis, it was, you know, incorporated as a buydown of the project costs, right? And I think the, the mechanics of how that would happen really come in that next step of working with the financier, because we are going to, you know, we're looking at multiple measures across several different funds, plus the, the grant dollars. And so, I'm not sure that there's an easy answer to your question in that sense, but typically, when there are those dollars, they're either, depending on how, what their rules are, you know, we may have to fund the project fully, and then those go and pay down the project. But I think those are things that, once we go out and talk to the financier, we'll be able to look at the terms and conditions of those dollars, and mesh those two together with the, the rest of the funding. As far as the interest rate question, we modeled this at just over 4%. I actually did a recent project, and rates came back just over 3%. That was last month. So, you know, we're trying to be conservative. We're hoping that actually, you know, we'd see something coming back at a, somewhere in that 3, 3 and 1/2% range. But we've modeled it a little bit higher, just to hopefully give us, give everyone a cushion.
And then, one last question, and I don't, I don't mean to hog all the questions, but, you know, going, going forward, one of the things that I'm keying in on with contractors is, what's your capability of helping us find and write grants, grant applications? As you go through this project of replacing just about everything, are you tweaked in on the grants that are available for cities to do these projects?
We do, we do look at that. So, I mean, we're always looking for whatever incentives and grants that may be out there. You know, who knows with the current bills that are in place, what programs are coming out of that, but it's something we certainly keep our eyes on.
Yeah, well, I, I guess the, the, the New Green Energy Bill was passed by Congress, so hopefully, there's going to be some grant money flowing out of that to little, small cities. And you're going to keep your eye open for that.
Keep our eye on that.
That's it for now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Paula?
Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this is-
Hold on one second, Councilmember Bagby, we can't hear you yet. Give us one second, please.
Okay.
All right, go ahead and try, Councilmember Bagby.
Okay. Testing. Right. I'm not sure if this is a question that Mr. Carter can answer, but perhaps staff can. I know that Bayren, which we are a member of, or, or we are served by Bayren, they just announced their public sector program, where, and, and one of their initiatives is to help libraries become more resilient. We, we kind of have a special situation in that, that makes us kind of different from the other Bayren areas, in that, you know, we have the, we have a regional library system, and, and then, of course, in, I think it's two or three cities in Sonoma County, the cities own the library buildings. And so, this is something that, that, that comes up, not just here in Cloverdale, but in other places, and other cities in the county. So, the, the Bayren program has started a, a, a public sector program for financing improvements, like, that would be similar to what we're discussing here. I'm wondering if Kevin or David know if there would be a particular advantage, or if they know that it, whether or not the, the Sonoma County library system is pursuing the improvements at all the buildings, or just the buildings that are not owned by the cities, if you have a status on that. And I, I kind of hesitate to bring this up, because honestly, it's a very similar program. It's a, it's a, it would be a, take an inventory of where we could save energy and make the building more efficient, and then provide financing. It's not, to my knowledge, it's not a, you know, a particular grant program. So, just wondering if staff has, you know, any, any comments about that? Or if, you know, is there a particular advantage for us waiting for the, the Sonoma County library system? Or is it in our interest to move forward? Because it might turn out to be six of one, half a dozen of the other in the end.
Mayor, if I can. Staff doesn't have an update on the status of Bayren's public sector program. I, I think, you know, that's something we can certainly look at, see if there are funding, you know, funding available, build that into, you know, a, a draft financing plan, if council gives us direction to move forward. It is a little bit complicated because of our JPA with the library system, we're one of the entities that actually owns the facility, and in our agreement, we are responsible for making improvements to, to the building that we lease to the library system. So-
David can't hear you.
We can't hear any responses.
Okay.
Testing, testing, testing.
There, that's working down. I, I think Brooklyn has a hand raised as well.
So, just, it sounds like it's coming through. Okay, okay. I, what I was sharing, Councilmember Bagby, with you and council, was, we don't have a current update on the, the Bayren public sector program in terms of how it may interface with, with this proposed project. You know, the, the only real energy system that we are, that we evaluated with, with respect to the library, I believe, was just the HVAC primarily. And, and that was the focus, because we know it's near end of life, we have planned to, you know, we've, we've budgeted for that expense for a number of years in anticipation that we would need to replace that system. But luckily, so far, we've been able to, to, you know, limp along. But, you know, we, we could certainly look more closely at the Bayren program and see, you know, where there are opportunities to interface that program with, with this program again, assuming we get direction to move forward with the financing plan.
So, I see Brooklyn Stewart has his hand up. If you, I know he's, I have some answers to the questions, please go ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you. It's a, it's a resource, free resource for identifying efficiency and resiliency opportunities at, at libraries. What it would do at this stage is, is really take you back to the beginning of identifying options or, or opportunities, and then helping finding financing and programs like, like PG&E's SST. So, at the stage you're at now, it would be, it'd be taking a few steps back of something that's already been completed.
Mayor, if I could ask a follow-up question? Yeah, and, and actually, yeah, you bring up a, a good point, Brooklyn. I'm just, I'm wondering if the library system, you know, does move forward, that perhaps we could provide the, the audit information on the building to them, and that would help them get a couple of steps ahead. So, thank you.
Yes, my question is around the issue of the actual status of these two buildings, and if some of the, some of the conditions may keep these buildings from being able to receive these upgrades.
Is this a question for David Carter?
Can't hear.
So, are we referring?
I think the question was whether the senior center and the library are in a condition to support replacement of the HVAC systems.
Yes, I mean, the, the, the systems are already there, so in essence, we would be, you know, swapping out, you know, newer, more efficient equipment for what's already in that, you know, in that environment. You know, Brooklyn, I don't know if there was any, I don't think there was anything that we noted during our audit that would preclude us from doing that. Usually, when we're looking at the buildings, we are looking at, you know, the, the roofs and then what have you, to make sure that they're all capable of, of, you know, supporting what they need to support, and that they're not in, you know, shape that would preclude us from doing that sort of work. Brooklyn, did you have any other thought on that?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the audit process, is to look at the, sorry, there's a lot of- It certainly is, is part of the audit process, to look at the facility, make sure that no improvements to the infrastructure or the structure itself need to be made, so that you can install more efficient, in this case, HVAC equipment.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think it's a great project. I want to thank you for the presentation and all the work that went into it. I think we have a lot of infrastructure that's old, outdated, and if we don't fix it now, it's just a matter of time when it needs to be replaced. So, the plan is a good one. I, I am certainly supportive of moving with the library, as well as the senior center. I think the city owns those buildings, and if they go out next year, the city's going to be on the hook to repair them. So, I mean, it just makes sense that we just do it, do it right. I think it's important, we do have that grant, and 50% of it is covered, and that money's going to be placed into this, so this'll do the project 100%. It just makes sense, so I am supportive of moving forward with it, recognizing that the loan is a large one for the size city, but also, the, the revenue saved that we're paying to, for energy, will pay down the loan. It's, it's a wash, so there's really no cost out of pocket for the city, because we're going to pay one way or the other, and it makes more sense to pay with the, by upgrading the systems, long-term, we'll have a, realize a significant savings. So, I'm for moving forward with the full project. Thank you.
My first question, David, would probably be for you, is, we own the library, but do they pay rent, or, or how does that work? How, how is that lease set up?
I think our leases are structured that, essentially, it's a dollar a year for both the senior center and the library.
And is the county not able to put in towards things like this, upgrades along those lines?
The county's responsibility is really for the interior. So, if, for, for instance, say, within about the last two years, they did a complete, you know, tenant upgrade, and, and, you know, the accommodated kind of operations. So, they, they took on the full cost of that. But in terms of building structure and the large mechanical systems, the city is responsible. So, painting, roof, HVAC, and exterior.
Okay, thank you. And could you explain the gridby system, and why you said it might not be beneficial at this time?
So, I'll, I'll answer my half of it, and then I'll let David answer the second half. So, the gridby system is a more advanced aeration system. When you're breaking down waste, the more air you can bring through it, the, the better that, that works. And so, the, the payback for that system's about 34 years, which, you know, is pushing, you know, a period of time. But it is a capital investment that you would, if you were wanting to add it to the wastewater treatment plant, you would just do anyhow. Part of the cost of that, that's making it that long, is that the pumps that move the air into the ponds, needs to have some, typically, some sort of enclosure. So, that's what's driving the economics. We had a conversation last week, that there was some other things happening, evaluation with the wastewater treatment plant, I think at a government, what do I want to say?
Regulatory.
Yes, you know, perspective that if you guys are forced to move in a certain direction, it may make sense just to wait on this, and I'll let you allow-
Is that discussing, like, towards the tertiary system?
Yes.
That's exactly it, Mayor, is, is when we were reviewing options, the, just, the concern is, with this investment, whether, if we move forward, and then we're subject to a requirement that we upgrade the plant to tertiary, it's going to require such a significant modification to the plant. We anticipate that, you know, we would have to, it may address, calling the question whether the feasibility of this project at this time. So, it, it, there's this kind of uncertainty out in the future, just want to bring to council's attention. It doesn't mean that it's not a good idea, that we shouldn't do it automatically, it's just that because of the regulatory uncertainty, and what impact that may have on the plant, it just, and then couple that with the long payback period, it lends itself to whether, you know, we should carry it out or not. It, it obviously does offer some benefits in terms of energy savings. We hadn't done a deep dive analysis whether it increases our plant capacity for treatment because of the, the new additional blowers. But, so that, there was some of the considerations, and that's why we identified that as one of the options, is to eliminate the gridby system. So, you know, we just really wanted to bring that to council's attention. Again, there, there's still benefits to, to including it, but, you know, given the longer payback period, some of the uncertainties relative to whether we have to upgrade the plant, it, it's a, it's, it's why we identified it as an option without it.
I may add, you know, I think it would have value even in an upgraded plant, but if you had to reconfigure, then you might have to move things around and what have you, so then it, you know, raises some additional costs there. So, that, the nice part is, as part of the overall project, because you're balancing all those measures together, that 34-year period gets subsumed into that 15-year, you know, payback as, as an overall project economic, but-
So, David, if I'm understanding you correctly, and the comments that you're making, we can go down the list and cherry pick- we can go down the list and cherry pick what we want to remove from that list.
You can't.
If we don't think it's going to fit our needs right now, and maybe we can do it under that $3 million grant, we could take it away and do it ourselves and just leave it off the list altogether. Okay?
Just remember that if you do that, and it's a, you know, one of those long-term capital measures, it's a capital project for you.
I know, yeah.
So if I don't have any more hands or comments from, I'm sorry.
So I have just a question going back to the grid B system. How old is our current system, and what is the life expectancy of it?
Back to the grid B system. How old is our current system, and what is the life expectancy of that system?
I don't have the immediate answer to your question, Councilmember Paula, on the life expectancy of those blowers. I know there's been, you know, quite a bit of work on, you know, maintaining them and doing things to extend their life expectancy. So I would need to look at that more closely. I don't know, David, if that's, I know you looked at them, if that was something.
I don't remember off the top of my head. I'll give Brooklyn the chance. I know that we did intend to keep the existing system in there for backup and redundancy, so it wasn't like we're going to pull it all out. But, you know, their end of life, they're getting, you know, there's a fair amount of maintenance going on. Brooklyn, do you have any additional info on the current condition, if you will, of the existing blowers?
Send a text to Rob, our project engineer. I, we can get that answer for you very quickly, but I don't have it for you directly in front of me.
Yes, I see here where the annual savings by changing, it could be, is about $27,200 per year, which is significant. Over four years that we sit here waiting, that's $100,000. That could be gone to a brand-new system versus we're still paying that annual cost. So it's a little, you know, I really think we really need to look at this closely because it's a lot of money, and if it breaks in four years, we're forced with a capital improvement project that we probably won't have to throw at it. So we'll have to figure out how to pay for it at that time, where, and if we, and in four years, we've spent about $400,000 on power to run the existing system. So it's, or $100,000, $105,000. So I really think, you know, a lot of, a lot of research went into this, and we really need to take a look at it. I realize with the different water requirements and the different system upgrades, but there's nothing that I'm aware of that's on the board right now that says these are going to happen. There's always been that thought that they could move forward, but it may be five years, it may be 10 years. So I really think we need to look at what we know today. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands from council, let's open it up to the public. We have one on the attendees list. Good evening, Reese, can you hear us?
Yes, Cloverdale. And my question is really for David Carter and for Centrica. I know this wasn't on your list, and I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in it. I just wondered about the, were any of the facilities looked at for water heating with the incentives that are, you know, coming out or available regarding the G, K through 12 for heat pump water heating, and the fact that that direct install program could cover the cost completely for installing heat pump water heaters? Thank you.
Brooklyn, I'm going to let you tackle that one.
I believe you're talking about the schools, is that correct? Yeah, we're not touching any of the schools, as those are, those fall under the districts. You're right that there are grants, there are separate grants that are administered through California school districts. But our program, our project does not include, at least with this, working with any of the districts specifically. But I don't disagree with anything you said.
May I raise this, raise in their hand if you'd like to give them more time or not? That's fine.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Unable to answer back. It's a government and K through 12 direct install program, so it actually would cover municipal buildings as well.
And I actually agree with that. I think it's something we've been looking at with the, with the county as well as we start their project. I don't think we evaluated the replacement of any hot water, domestic hot water heating systems in the building. It's certainly something that we can go back and explore, you know, because this is something that came out recently, but it was not included in our original scope. But it is a lucrative program, and so if there's, you know, some opportunity where there's a need, it should probably be worth looking at. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Cruz, do you have anything you would like to add at this point? Councilmember Bagby? Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes, I guess the answer that I heard from staff regarding the regulatory uncertainty around the status of the wastewater treatment plant, I was wondering, just, sorry, if you could just go over that a little bit again, because what it sounds like to me is like putting solar on your house when you're five years away from needing a new roof anyway. And that's my concern in making an investment in that hardware at this time, is are we going to, is there a possibility that we're going to be, you know, subject to regulatory changes that, that maybe costs more than what we would save if we were to invest in that upgraded equipment right now? So if you could just talk a little bit more about what your, maybe what the city engineer analysis might have been, maybe what the Centrica engineer, what they think their findings are. I'm just not sure I have enough information to be able to support moving forward that portion of the project or not.
So David, would that be you? Talk about that?
Mayor, I'm happy to respond to the question. I mean, I think first and foremost, we, just kind of starting from, you know, where we are with this evaluation, is looking at the cost of the capital improvement, what the generation, what the savings would generate, and how, you know, just simple project economics, we'd pay it back. Where I'm also looking from is just the uncertainty in the regulatory environment and whether it might impact the viability of the project or mean that we have to make adjustments to accommodate this improvement. And so I just raised that as an issue. It's not a simple black and white issue, and that's why I think it's, want to call it out as an option for council. I didn't want to come and say, you know, we should absolutely, it's an absolute project we should do, and then, you know, be back here in a couple of years saying, well, we're going to modify the plant. And that doesn't mean that there aren't still some value to those blowers and reconfigure them in a way that's going to work with whatever, you know, new design. It's just, there's, it's just, there's uncertainty. And so I think to Councilmember Paul's point, you know, there's an opportunity for some immediate savings, and that may be enough to say it's worth the risk of moving forward. Likewise, you may say, well, there's enough uncertainty in the regulatory environment that we know we're going to have to really reconfigure everything, that it, we want to put that project on pause for now. So that's, you know, really what I want to present to council is those options. And what we can do, what I'm hearing council say is that there seems to be support for the all-in, but maybe just looking a little bit more closely at this grid B project, and, you know, doing a little more evaluation, maybe come back to council with a financing plan that reflects, you know, kind of narrow down your options and see what that looks like from a cost perspective. It might give you more comfort in terms of, well, let's go with, you know, let's go with adding the grid B, and because of the financing plan as it's presented, you know, it's worth the risk.
I have one more question. You guys did an audit of all our HVAC systems. Did you get years that they were installed or anything like that to try to figure out how old they really are?
At the nameplate level, I'm sure we did look at that, Brooklyn.
Absolutely. Yeah, we don't look at anything that's under 15 years. Generally, after 15 years, that's what we bring to, just based on, you know, the health of the equipment and years in operation. But usually, if it's, if it's under 15 years, we cross it off the list. It's not something worth upgrading until it's deeper into its end of life, which most of your equipment is much, much, much more than that.
Just one more question. If we gave you the go-to start the project, how long would it take to complete it? I mean, do you have a ballpark idea? Is it a five-year project, a 10-year?
It's a one-year project.
You'll have all of this done in one year?
Subject to getting the equipment. I mean, I think that there's, you know, some potential lead time issues, but the construction period in Brooklyn, correct me if I'm wrong, I think was 10 to 12 months, so.
Yeah, the longest, the longest.
That's pretty aggressive, but okay.
It's what we typically see in these types of projects. I think getting equipment will be the, probably the biggest hurdle we'll see.
In which cities in Sonoma County have you done so far?
So in Sonoma County, we've worked with a number of cities. We haven't done a project in Sonoma. We're, I see Christine Condon's on the phone. We're actually just kicked off the IGA process with the county, so we're looking at 100-plus buildings across the county itself. A lot of our projects we've done that I, you know, reference-wise are in San Mateo County. So we've done major comprehensive projects at Belmont, San Carlos, and San Mateo.
You have no problem with us contacting them? Okay. Thank you.
Brooklyn, I see your hand up if you want to speak real quick.
Sure. Longest lead time item is the water meters. And just a correction, I just verified from the manufacturer, we're looking at, the current timeframe is anticipated for March delivery. I think it was talked about earlier as May, so it's a little bit, little bit less than that. We should have it by March. Again, that depends on when POs are submitted, but that's, that's what we're, we're saying the projected delivery date. So within a year is attainable, certainly.
How many people you have working on that project at one time? I mean, installing all these meters citywide?
Lighting, you've got the mechanical, you've got the solar. So, yeah, there's several teams being deployed independently.
And they have to spend the nights in Cloverdale, right? So we need the TOT and we need the tax revenue, so that'll be good. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby, I see your hand up. Please go.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to just wrap up by saying I'm not completely risk averse. I just don't feel like, on the water treatment plant, we have quite enough information. I guess we have a great resource in our, our current city engineer working for West Yost, and they have a great relationship with the Regional Water Quality Board and Matt St. John and his staff. And so I just, before, I would love to be able to support all of these completely. I just feel like there isn't quite enough information on that. If we could just reach out to our resources, and if we could just get a better feel for that, I think that we'd be in a better position moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. One last question. The police station, is it good to upgrade things like HVAC with a 58-year turnaround at this point in lighting? That's $150,000. I don't know if it's, with the ideas that we're talking about, if it's something that we want to discuss further on that part as well.
Vice Mayor, I need to make a question. Mayor, Vice Mayor indicated, you know, any one element of the project that was identified in the slideshow can, you know, be removed. You know, it obviously reduces the capital costs, but it also reduces the savings. And, you know, some of these improvements are things like lighting that can be done fairly quickly, that could, you know, help improve the comfort of our officers. So, you know, it's kind of weighing those, weighing those options. You know, from my perspective, I think it makes sense, but again, you know, you kind of look at it through that lens of, well, if we're going to make modifications to, or do something different, whether that investment makes sense or not. Again, I think the payback period, you know, is, we're bundling it, so it kind of looking at it through that lens is maybe the best way, rather than breaking it down on an individual.
I think that's an excellent point. I do, you know, when we start looking at things individually, it's really easy to sort of see that tree and then kind of miss the forest. And the fact is, is that, let's suppose you take it out, and, you know, next year, the system completely fails. Your mechanism for actually having to be able to pay for it is now gone, so you've either got to get emergency funds, capital budget, what have you. So it's that trade-off, right? You're absolutely right. It's a long payback. It's a long payback no matter what, whether you're treating it as a capital project or otherwise. It's just the mechanism of the project that would allow it to be completed now.
I just, my problem with that one, and I know this is almost off-topic, and I hate to go there because I don't do that. The building is not fit to be in. It needs to be retrofitted for seismic reasons, number one. And so we're basically at a point that it's time to build a new one. So if we push somehow to get the bond or something funding in the next two years, how do I justify the $150,000 next year when in 11 months, we're going to tear it down? That's, and that, and it's, and it's, I mean, obviously, you know me, I'm, he's been doing this for 20 years.
You're really optimistic in 11 months. Maybe 11 years by the time we get the bond and get the plans and get a contractor and get it going. You're talking many years.
Okay, but still, there's a 10-year, a 10-year turnaround and a 58-year turnaround. So it's still, go ahead, please. I'm looking for a good answer on this.
I wanted to ask, David, when we come back with the next step, the financing plan, how much flexibility would the council have to, you know, evaluate the grid B at that point or other ones? Will it be time to pick and choose at that point?
I think there will be. I mean, I anticipate going to the financial advisor, kind of laying everything out on the table, and we can certainly indicate where we believe there are some concerns, and really solicit their feedback and expertise to help do that. And then, you know, when we come back for the resolution or even maybe ahead of that, to be able to show you how those options would impact the financing of the project.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Bagby has her hand up. Last comment in here if we could.
I think that you and Councilmember Paula bring up a really good point, and Councilmember Cruz alluded to it earlier. You know, what's the condition of these buildings? Well, the answer is the police station of the buildings we're talking about, it's probably the worst. And I, it just, it occurred to me that, I'm sure this has been part of the discussions between Mr. Carter and our staff, but we're talking about different categories here. We can't live without water treatment. We can't live without a police station. If the library has an issue with their HVAC, we can probably find the money, and they may have to close for a couple of days, and that might be okay. So we're really, you know, we're talking about, you know, mission-critical systems and ones where we could probably find a solution if something came up. And so I know, I'm sure that that prioritization has been part of earlier discussions, but I kind of just need to bring it back in now. And that's kind of the impetus behind my asking the questions. It's like, how imminent are improvements at the water treatment plant that would? It's like, how imminent is our improvements at the water treatment plant that would make our investment in those systems a, a bad financial decision? So that's, I guess that's the additional information that I need, and I'd like to see considered. And if we have some time, I think we've given some really great feedback, all the council members have given really great feedback about their, their various concerns. I think that in general, I'm, I'm supportive. I just need a little bit more information in some of those categories. Does that, does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, 100%, and it sounds like we have a, a plan. Any more information necessary to move forward with the financial plan?
I think we have pretty clear direction from staff. I mean, staff has clear direction from council, you know, leaning towards all-in but wants further information is to both the grid B system and the police station.
Sounds good. Sounds accurate. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And Brooklyn, thank you for being here. Okay. Next, G2, adoption of the homeless strategic action plan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's been a long time coming when we initially brought the, a framework to council to develop a, a strategic plan to address the issues related to homelessness in our communities and surrounding county. You know, since that time, we, I think we've, you know, we, we kickstarted a, a planning effort that's been tremendously valuable, starting with council's appointment of a community advisory group of, of experts and professionals in the field that helped us to refine a draft strategic plan that would help to, you know, do, do a couple of things. One, give us some, some direction on how we want to address the issues related to homelessness. I think as part of that process, it was, it enabled us to get community buy-in and support through the advisory committee meetings. It was a, it provided a venue for the community members who had concerns and issues to be able to, you know, share their, their issues and concerns and also feedback on potential policies. Ultimately, we drafted goals and strategies that really were reflective of our community's values. We, we, as part of this process, did a survey to see what were the top 10 priorities, and those are, you know, reflected in the, in the plan itself. And, you know, we, we heard from the community pretty clearly that, you know, one of the real focuses is on addressing, you know, some of the related hazards, including, you know, fire prevention and impacts to private property, but also what kind of programs we could institute to address the impacts on homelessness to themselves. And, and Chief in particular has led up a group with our representatives to, you know, try to get and focus care on, for some of those, some of those individuals in our community. So the culmination of all that is the strategic plan that's in your pocket tonight. What we're, what we're asking council to do is to adopt the, the resolution that would approve the, the strategic plan. I think the intent of the strategic plan, one again, is, is, is to provide a, a roadmap for us for how we want to, you know, continue addressing homelessness and, and, you know, continue the process that we've established in, in terms of the community advisory group and monthly meetings, but also our, our coordination with other interest groups in the county. And ultimately, we hope that by having a plan in place, it can help guide some of the, the strategic planning processes that have been kick-started since we started our process. I feel like we, we're kind of ahead of the game, and so it will hopefully inform those processes. And last but not least, you know, position us for potential funding that we understand is available, that has been established by Governor Newsom for communities that have established these proactive planning efforts. So really excited that we are, were able to put this plan together and, you know, really didn't hear any, any, any opposition. I, I think there's actually tremendous support for the plan, and again, the process that we've set in place is part of this, that we developed as part of this planning process. So again, the, the action tonight that we're requesting is adoption of the plan. We're happy to, you know, touch on any of the goals or strategies that you'd like us to see or like to, to hear more about, and, you know, including, you know, the identification of what resources are available, and, and that's an area that I think is going to require continual update as the, you know, as, as the homelessness response evolves, new programs are established, new entities are, are developed and new, new programs, so that will be something that we'll have to kind of continue to update is those, those resources and those programs that we identify as part of our resource guide included as an attachment to. So I'll kind of pause there. Again, we, I want to just say thank you to the community advisory group for sticking with us for what was almost two years and about 15 meetings, some of which were very well-attended as we developed this, this plan and the planning process.
Great, thank you, David.
Just real quick, David touched on it, but the, the resources guide, which is kind of an appendix, does have some outdated information on Jerry Creek Village and Reach for Home to have that updated. So when we, before we put it on the website, we'll have that all updated.
Thank you, Kevin. Councilmember Cruz, would you like to start?
Yes, I want to.
Do you want to?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I want to say thank you to all of Cloverdale, especially to the committee and the staff. I want to thank Vice Mayor and Supervisor Gore and now Mayor Lance, because this has been a process, and it has taken more than two years to get here, and very many meetings, not only locally but at the region level. I also want to thank Steve Sotomayor, who's assigned to work with us in all of these efforts. And it is not just a local problem, it's a regional, it's a national problem. And it is, as David said, we're really ahead of the game because of the concern of the community, the engagement of the community. I thank Alexander Valley Health and Colleen Halbom and her staff in particular, because they have been key players in making sure that this happens. It is important that we continue to have a presence at the regional level as well as the state level when it comes to community services, because this is not going away. We just have a way to be able to manage it a little bit better, and we need to continue to work towards improving this. So once again, thanks to all who have been involved in all these local, regional, and state meetings.
Councilmember Bagby, would you like to go next? Councilmember Paula?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ditto what Councilmember Cruz had to say. I just want to thank all those that were involved in this, a lot of hard work, a lot of effort. I think we're at the forefront, we're leading in this area. Getting funding is important, and I think this is going to lay the foundation to help us hopefully in the months and years ahead. So again, just thank you. It's, it's an excellent document, and I would like to ask that I get a hard copy of this printed out for me and put in my box. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm just going to ditto on what Councilmember Cruz said, and a, a big thank you to the chief, and particularly to you, because you really grabbed the bull by the horns and tackled this situation that we have in Cloverdale ever since you came on the council. And I know Kevin and, and David have helped, but you're not afraid to get down along the riverbanks and get underneath the bushes and, you know, just do what you can to make things work right. So thank you for that. And Chief, thank you again in your career.
This whole thing has been a definite team effort. It goes clear across the county. A lot of even state officials have been part of this, and watching our plans and our discussions and our debates actually come to fruition and, and work, and have the county looking to us as the model in a lot of different directions is really cool. To watch the different entities, whether they're mental health, medical, law enforcement, whatever it is, work together, which they really don't ever do, and create answers for some very specific problems, to get us to what they call the functional zero of homeless in Cloverdale within the city limits was phenomenal. I, I know that changes by the minute, however, we've had people that went to school with my mother that have been homeless since high school that now have answers. And it's because of people like the chief, people like Reach for Home, people like Alexander Valley Healthcare, people like Wallace House, that worked hard together to make these things happen. And so it's, it's, it's a group effort, and to watch David and Kevin with this strategic homeless plan, the, the action plan, to get all the different surveys and all the information and listen to us change wording every single meeting, and take your 3,700 different points that you wanted and knock it down to about 12 is great. So we thank you guys for all your hard work and frustration and loss of hair. Anyone else on the council want to say anything before we move on to public? Councilmember Cruz, please, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on one second, we got to wait for you, we got to wait for him to turn you on. Okay, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say that I did not mention the Sheriff's Department, and that has been a key element because of our incredible city limits and county jurisdiction. So that's what I wanted to say before you started saying anything. So thank you.
Thank you so much, absolutely. Okay, let's open up to public.
Anyone in the audience want to speak on this behalf? Seeing none, and no hands on the attendees list. Jessica Chavez, I know that you're part of Cherry Creek Homes. If you want to speak, raise your hand and I'll get you able to speak. If not, I'll bring it back to the dais.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the resolution by title only. A resolution of City of Cloverdale City Council adopting the homeless strategic plan.
Perfect. Okay. Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
That motion passes with five ayes. First one is Finance, Admin, and Police.
Mr. Mayor, our September 5th meeting has been canceled. Because of Labor Day, we're meeting up over the 3rd.
Thank you. Planning and Sustainability?
Our next meeting is August 23rd.
Public Works?
Next meeting is August 23rd.
All right.
I'm sorry, the Public Works and Facilities Subcommittee, next meeting is August 23rd.
Joint City and Fire District, they have not had a meeting. I'll, I'll do that one for you since you're not working very well in here. That is, they did not have their meeting, their next meeting is scheduled for October 10th, and I'm going to be suggesting that that gets mixed into our homeless subcommittee to create one. And Joint Cities and School, next meeting is September 19th. And the Homeless Community Advisory Group is September 13th, and that will also be, include the Fire District.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask you to, or remind you that a constituent approached me about the school flashing billboard that they have on Cloverdale Boulevard. It affects her ability to go to get, to get a good night's sleep as it's on all night long. So if you could just bring that to their attention, so.
Definitely forward that for our agenda.
Okay.
Council reports, then submitted? None? Email reports? Oh, I'm sorry, I see. Councilmember Cruz, you have a hand up.
Yes, I.
Give us one second. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I want to make us ahead and starts promoting recruitment of council liaison, high school student council liaison.
We have one person so far, and I think that that's where we're going to move forward. That is what I emailed the, the principal, because they had been recruiting for quite a while and still only had one person interested.
Had two people approached me. They did not, for some reason, haven't been able to get the information, so is there any way for that, for these two individuals to be considered?
Office and happened to speak to the principal to get the application absolutely could be considered.
Thank you. Okay. Any informational reports? Sensitive reports? Seeing none. City manager report?
Attorney.
City attorney report?
Thank you.
Wow. Any, any updates on water or COVID-19 that we need to know about?
Just a brief update on, on water, but we included information in the.
We, we included information in last week's newsletter that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commissioner, FERC, did grant PG&E a variance request to reduce flows into the eastern branch of the Russian River, which will reduce the amount of water from the Potter Valley Project that is diverted into Lake Sonoma. We anticipate that that is going to impact the voluntary drought agreement, and I mean, technically, the, the State Board has put a hold on the voluntary drought agreement process and has started curtailment for certain water right holders within the upper Russian River watershed. Currently, that curtailment does not extend to pre-1914 water right holders, which the city is, but nonetheless, we are continuing to submit our, our monthly diversion reports identifying how much water we are pulling from the river via our, our Russian River water well field. So it, it, you know, as they continue to monitor the water supply, there, there, you know, very well could be curtailment in our future, but so far, we have not been subject to the specific curtailment, but other entities within the upper half. So we're, we're currently evaluating that and trying to determine what impact that may have on, on our own water supplies. But right now, as of right now, we're in pretty, we, we believe that the reservoir levels in Lake Menasino are in pretty good position, at least relative to last year, and we're continuing to monitor and, and attend meetings with regional board to better understand what the impact of this, the, the FERC's variance is on, on our water supply.
Thank you. Council direction on future agenda items. Councilmember Cruz, I see a hand.
Yeah, it, it's not necessarily an, an agenda. It's more national for the public, to make sure that they look at Cloverdale Connect as well as, as the city manager's weekly report. Both have incredible information, and in terms of future agenda reports, I think I would like to discuss a little bit more how Cloverdale Connect is working and if it's meeting the needs of all members of the Cloverdale community. in terms of future agenda reports, I think I would like to discuss a little bit more, um, how Cloverdale Connect is working and if it's meeting the needs of all members of the Cloverdale community.
Translators, uh, we need to work with La Familia Sana. They're prepared to work with the ci- the city to provide. So I'd like to see if we can get something moving forward with that. And seeing no other hands?
Mr. Mayor?
All right. Meeting adjourned at 7:52. Next meeting is for Aug- I'm sorry. Councilmember Cruz is back again. There we go. Hold on, give us one second.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just hoping that maybe we can consult with Hillsburg in terms of their translation services, because, uh, they do have a program. And I don't know who the Familia Sana would be providing. Something to be discussed in terms of, um, the, the skills and professionalism required for city council translation interpretation. Thank you.
Okay. Next meeting is August 24th, 2022, at 6 o'clock. This meeting is adjourned at 7:53.